Township Planning Board Meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Korean News. Notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. Notice made available to the township clerk. Notice sent to the Korean News and the Star Legend. Can I have the open public meeting notice, please, Mr. Barlow?
I had to unmute myself.
Okay.
In keeping with the Department of Community Affairs guidelines, this meeting is being held by way of a virtual Zoom platform. I believe that the Scadaway has complied with those requirements. Any notices have included the Zoom link. And it's appropriate to go ahead in this forum, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Buckley, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Waller?
Present.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Here.
Ms. Corcoran?
Here.
Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Reverend Kenny?
He's here, I heard him.
I know. Reverend, you're muted. I muted you by accident. Hit star six. There he is. Thank you. Mr. Espinoza? Mr. Foster? He just called, he's getting on now. And Madam Chair?
Here. We will now, would everyone now recite the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have professionals to be sworn in this evening?
Mr. Reinerston.
Yes, I believe so, yes. Mr. Reinerston, can you please raise your right hand? Whether the testimony about to give will be the truth or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Barlow, would you please note the changes of the, any changes that have been made to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, with regards to number 10 on tonight's agenda, 21 PB 24 Maple Woods Condominium Association. That's been postponed till April 13th, 2022. They still have the notice for that. In addition, the number 13, 21 PB 34 slash 35 V, 140 Circle Drive North, has been postponed until the April 13th meeting. I believe the applicant has already noticed for that, so there'll be no further notice. If anyone is on the meeting for that matter, it will be heard at the April 13th meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item number seven, adoption of resolution to memorialize action taken on February 9th, 2022.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to memorialize application 21 PB 40 slash 41 V for Revolutionary Housing Group LLC for minor subdivision and bulk variance.
Do I have a second?
Dawn Corcoran, I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Espinoza?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to memorialize application 21 PB 46 slash 47 V, Acme LLC preliminary and final site plan with bulk variances.
Do I have a second?
Reverend Kenny, I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Espinoza?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to memorialize application 21 PB 44 slash 45 V for QTS Investment Properties, Scadaway LLC for preliminary and final site plan with bulk variance.
Do I have a second?
Reverend Kenny, I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny? Mr. Espinoza?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Item number eight, adoption of the minutes from the regular meeting of February 9th, 2022.
Madam Chair, I would like to adopt the minutes from the regular meeting from February 9th, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Don't move.
That's a second, Mr. Kenny, right?
Yes.
I mean, yeah, whatever you think.
What'd you meant?
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Espinoza?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Chair, this is Carol Saunders. I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Do we have a second?
Second, Dawn Corcoran.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Espinoza?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Item 10 has been adjourned onto item 11, which is 21 PB 32 slash 33 V as in Victor, Shan- Chantilla Patel and Duxabin Patel.
Hello.
Minor subdivision of bulk variance request.
Hello, esteemed members of the board and township professionals. Everybody can hear me correct?
Yes, how are you tonight?
I'm fine. I'm Tim Arch. I'm an attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey, and I am representing the applicants tonight, Chantalal Patel and Daxabin Patel. This is a, an application for a minor subdivision of 8 Brotherhood Street, which is block 8601, lot 25.03 in the R10 zone. Some housekeeping matters, I would ask Mr. Barlow if he's had an opportunity to review the provided notice and if we are properly, have proper jurisdiction before this board?
Yes, we are, Mr. Arch.
Thank you. We have two staff reports that I was provided. One is Mr. Hinterstein's report, which was dated 10/27/21 and revised on 3/7/22. And I also have a CME report that's dated 10/26/21. I would just ask for confirmation that those are the two reports that were generated.
Yes, and I assume you also have Ms. Corcoran's October 12th, 2021, just indicating the necessary variances.
Yes, yes, correct. I do have that as well. My apologies for overlooking that.
All good.
That's, that's, in my view, that's usually the most important one.
I would agree. Mr. Barlow, I, I, I sent a revision, it was a minor revision for our planning report, but basically 99% for Mr. Arch, I mean, it, it's fine. There's just one item that we can discuss later on, but i- it is de minimis, okay?
Excellent.
Just wanted to let you know, thank you.
Wasn't it dated March 8th? Wrong?
March, Mar- that is correct. It's dated March 8th. I sent it out yesterday. It was basically confirming, we'll, we'll discuss it later, but basically was it the de minimis item that I, I noted?
Okay.
I'm, I'm assuming that items came off the list, so that's always a good thing. So I think we'll be able to deal with that pretty, pretty
Well, he corrected some typos, things of that nature.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So just a, a brief introduction, we're looking to subdivide this, this parcel. Currently, the, the lot as it is, it's an undeveloped parcel. It has about three times the required frontage as it is right now. It's well over twice the depth. Even after subdividing, what we're proposing, each proposed lot is going to be more than twice the required lot area. One of the, the comments that we did receive in our report that I just want to touch on quickly is that we didn't provide any architectural plans for this. The reason being is that we don't have plans currently or designs currently solidified for the two houses. The purpose of this subdivision is to ultimately build two conforming single-family homes, one of which, Mr. Chantalal Patel and Daxabin Patel will be living in. And on the other lot, their son, Shirog Patel, will be living in that as well. We don't currently have the designs of those homes finalized or done yet. Thank you, Mark.
I think we got them.
So we don't have those finalized yet, obviously, when those architecturals are done before applying for any, or while applying for any construction permits or building permits, the town will have to review those if they are not conforming to the, to the township code. Obviously, we would have to come back before a board in order to, to get relief on that. So that's the reason that architecturals were not provided currently. We did provide a photograph of the general style or type of home that we believe will be ultimately built there. But again, that's just a, a sort of a visual reference. And on our plans, we do have a conceptual footprint of a home just to show that a conforming, single-family home could be located on either of lots quite neatly. So with that sort of background in mind, I, I do want to indicate that we have Ms. Rena Patel and Shirog Patel who are here in case the board has any specific questions as to, as to the owners or representatives of the owner. And we do have one witness tonight, which would be Mr. Paul Fletcher, who's here as our engineer and our planner. One other thing I wanted to mention is that we do have a pending Middlesex County application. That was something that was requested as well. But briefly going through the reports, we don't see anything in those reports that we cannot or will not comply with in terms of any revisions that may need to be done to any of the plans. We would certainly agree with those comments. And there was, I believe, a request for a a dedicate, a right-of-way dedication in order to bring Brotherhood Road to its 25-foot half width. We would certainly comply with that and we would agree with that. So since I've said enough at this point, I will turn it over if I can ask Mr. Fletcher to be sworn in at this time.
Mr. Fletcher, can you please raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear that the testimony about to give will be the truth or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
It's Paul J. Fletcher. F-L-E-T-C-H-E-R.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
I think it paused. Thank you.
Yeah, I think there was a stutter, but I think, I think we're, I think we're good with that, correct?
We know, we know his address. Yep. The court reporter is nodding her head affirmatively.
Okay, good. So, Mr. Fletcher, you've testified in front of this board in the past, have you not?
Yes, I have.
And your credentials, other than the paper they're written on, have not deteriorated since the last time that you've been in front of this board, is that correct?
No, they are still there.
Okay. I would ask that he be accepted as a professional in both engineering and in planning, unless you want me to go through his credentials any further.
As Mr. Fletcher has testified before us many times, he's accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fletcher, you've had an opportunity to work on the, the submissions that we put in front of the board on this application, as well as you're familiar with the site, is that correct?
That is correct.
And if you could please give us the benefit of your opinion as a professional engineer and a planner as to the feasibility of what we're requesting?
Yes, I, I believe that the, the board has the authority to grant the variances under a flexible C2 criteria. I believe that the benefits substantially, substantially outweigh any detriments. I think several of the municipal land use law goals are promoted, specifically the general welfare, efficient use and development of land, and providing adequate light air and open space. I don't see any negative detriment to the neighborhood, the zone plan or the master plan. The subject property, block 8601, lot 25.03, as you had mentioned, Mr. Arch, is more than four times the size of the required hundreds, 10,000 square feet. The two new proposed lots are 23,000 and 25,500 respectively. That's lots 25.031 and 25.032 respectively. The only variance that's required is lot width, where 100 feet is required and 82.32 feet is proposed. That's the only variance. All other bulk requirements are satisfied and will be. With comment regarding road dedication, I'm not sure it may be, it may or may not be necessary. I believe right now that our right-of-way line is 25 feet to the center line. But I'll verify that and certainly if it's necessary, we'll, we'll provide that dedication.
Mr. Fletcher, just to clarify one thing, isn't there a variance also required for lot width?
It's lot frontage.
Lot width, excuse me?
It would be width and frontage, which in this case are essentially the same.
Okay. That is correct.
I would, I'm gonna throw Mr. Fletcher to the wolves now, if anybody has any questions on the board for Mr. Fletcher.
Okay, does the board have any questions, Mr. Fletcher, at this time? Hearing no response. Is there anyone?
Just a quick question. I, I think, Mr. Mr. Reinerston, did you want to address the one item that?
Yeah, just a mi- minor item, Mr. Fletcher. The total lot area. And then when you subdivide it, they don't match. They're off by like a foot. So I caught it actually because there was a slight discrepancy between one of the lots, and then I just looked at it and it was like off by a foot. So all I'm gonna say is just
We'll fix that.
Yeah, that, that, that's a pretty simple thing, it's math. Let's just make everything match.
You got it.
Okay, and, and just my observation, the only change in your plans had to do with curbs and, and driveway details, correct?
Yes, curb and actually sidewalk.
Sidewalk, and with that, I defer to the engineer on that, so thank you.
And, and we do understand that the roadway is under a moratorium until 2029.
Yes, we are aware of that.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm. Now, Ms. Buckley, can you see if there's any questions from the public?
I don't see anyone, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fletcher. I mean, Mr. Arch, do you have any other witnesses or you?
That would be our only witness. I, I would just like to close by saying I think it's a fairly straightforward subdivision. I think it could be, as Mr. Fletcher said, granted without any real detriment. And with that, I will, I will put it in your hands.
Okay, thank you. Now, before I ask for a motion, does the, the board have any other questions of anyone or Mr. Arch or Mr. Fletcher? If not, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Councilwoman Cahill. If I, if I may, Mr. Arch, when the plans for the home do come in, and you said if there are variances, we'll, we'll see those plans, of course, if there's a variance required. But just if you might, for the board and maybe for the public, when we're looking at the example of the home, right? The, the, the picture of the home, you know, what, what roughly would the square footage of that home be? And I, I'm imagining you may have it somewhere here in the detail, but I don't see it.
To be honest with you, that is just a, a picture of the representative's style, more so just the aesthetic style of the home. That is not an example of the, of the design or the specific home. So I don't believe we actually know what the overall square footage of that home is. It was just, we were, we were asked as a, we were asked by your professionals to provide just a sort of general stylistic view of what type of a home it's gonna be, I guess, as opposed to a ranch-style home, a
Right.
Tudor home. So in terms of the overall square footage of that home, obviously, we are going to be bound by what the, what the ordinance allows in that area.
Well, right, because if, if you're granted the variance for the lot size, that just means that the house's square footage itself now is gonna be bound by, you know, the, the ordinances. For let's say this was, you know, and, and granted, the, the square footage here or the lot width and the frontage and the lot width, it's, it's not that much a difference in, in terms of, you know, the feet from the, you know, for the total footage. But then that just puts an extra stressor on the size and the square footage of the house. And I would hope that, you know, the, your client would be aware of that.
We absolutely are, and, and I can certainly say that if, and again, this is a complete hypothetical, but if we did come in with a home that had, where we had to request now side setbacks, front setbacks and the like, I would imagine that your professionals would look at us and say, you created this subdivision, you created hardship.
Right.
And I, I, I don't see a real answer that I could provide for that.
Okay, a- and that's really just it, is, again, de minimis, I do agree with the statement, but it does, and will potentially, depending upon what the client's looking to build there, you know, create, they will have created that hardship for themselves on the plans. And all I would ask is that they be made quite aware of that, you know, as they go to submit their plans.
Correct, absolutely. They are aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, board, I, I, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, it's Dawn Corcoran. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application subject to the CME report and the staff report. And also in the event that, should we need a roadway dedication, that'd also be a condition of this approval.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Carol Saunders, second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny? Mr. Espinoza?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Item number
Thank you, Ms. Arch.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number 12, 20 PB 06, Nathan A. Yates Minor Subdivision.
Madam Chair, this is Councilwoman Cahill. I am going to need to recuse myself at this time for this application.
You may be excused.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Zulu, are you here? You ready?
Mr. Zulu's here, your, Madam Chair. Just by way of, I guess, recollection, this matter was heard at the last hearing and Mr. Yates, I'm sorry, Mr. Zulu had put on the proofs. And then there was an issue that came up with regards to some Middlesex Planning Board documents that the board was not in possession of. The record should reflect that Mr. Zulu has provided them to myself. I wonder where the feedback is coming from.
Okay, I hope the record is clear.
Yep, that we have received them. And with that, Mr. Zulu, I don't, do you have any additional witnesses you planned on calling this evening?
No. He's on mute.
You just gotta unmute yourself, Mr. Zulu.
Mr. Zulu, please unmute yourself.
No, you're still on mute, sir.
Gotta tap the screen, Mr. Zulu. Guess there's nothing we can do. Somebody call him?
He could call it in.
Hi, this is Nathan Yates. I just sent a quick message to Bob.
Okay, good.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Looking at it now.
Does anyone, anyone?
Yeah, he called in down here on this one.
Uh-huh. You might be too close to the speaker. Can you hear us, Mr. Zulu?
I, I hear you, but
Okay, you have to shut your speaker off on your computer. You're getting feedback because they're too close to each other.
It's reverberating.
Exactly. You shut the volume off on your computer. Maybe go take a walk.
Good.
Bob, would it be, would you have you call in on the phone and drop the video?
He's on the phone now. He could drop the video. Because that's where he's getting the feedback. He's on hold.
I guess to consider, yeah.
Speak again, Mr. Zulu. The
Yes, to shut his computer off.
Make ten your computer off, Mr. Zulu.
Just stay on the phone.
I will leave you out there. I'll be right down. Thank you.
Yay, there you are.
Is that any better?
Perfect.
Much better. So I, I don't know if you heard what I had said, or should I repeat it or?
Would you repeat it, please, because what, I, I heard voices, but they were unintelligible because it was like I was in a cave.
Understood. What, what I had just said by way of recollection is that this matter had previously been heard by the board. You had put on your proofs. And there was an issue with regards to some Middlesex Planning Board documentation that myself and the board and the board's professionals had not received. Since that time, we have received the documents that you forwarded, and the record should reflect that. I asked you if you had any additional witnesses you were planning on calling this evening.
No, we don't. I I had intended just to recapitulate what we addressed, asked Mr. Yates to address the, the planner's letter. But as we have discussed, perhaps as far as we can discuss them, the issues in the case are 270 feet of sidewalk and what amounts to a 21-foot easement onto Mr. Yates' property. The revised sketch plot reflects a, you know, a 20, a 66-foot right-of-way for River Road. And as you probably know, your planner's letter refers refers to a 60-foot right-of-way, which exists. In fact, it's 60 feet. So I guess the bottom line there is that Mr. Yates is, is not going to dedicate an easement to provide for a 120-foot or 110-foot right-of-way, as is suggested in Mr. Hinterstein's memo of May 24th, 2021. And as far as the sidewalks are concerned, I really don't understand how he could proceed to install those on county property anyway. But even if he were to where Piscataway were to facilitate that, the the 21-foot easement approximately is, is, is off the table.
If I can just address that, maybe take one step forward and take two steps back. Just to be clear, the, the split rail fence your client had agreed to remove or move as part of the hearing, and also to remove all the accessory structures that were noted, that if they remain, they would give rise to variances.
Correct.
I mean, my thought, Mr. Zulu, is the Township Ordinance 2507 doesn't limit the reach to just municipal roadways. It, it reaches the municipality. So there's no exception in the ordinance for roadways under the jurisdiction of the county. And, and I think Piscataway has to enforce their ordinances until a court rules otherwise. I, the CME plan, and just to be clear, it's the CME plan for the county. While calling for somewhere between, I think, a 33 to 35, what, a half width, those plans are preliminary. My understanding is they haven't gone out to bid. So the township doesn't want to be in a position where the final plan adopted by the county would, would require acquiring additional right-of-way in the future. The township could probably do with something like a 40-foot right-of-way, which would limit the the dedication as long as we have like a 10-foot temporary construction easement. And as to the sidewalks, that's also in the ordinance. So I think the sidewalks have to be constructed at, at the proposed elevation that the county is saying, and hold off on curbs until such time as, as the road's being put in, or at least bond for it until such time as the county decides what they want to do. And, and just, you know, I, I'm not telling you something you don't know, Mr. Zulu, but, you know, just for the board's edification. You know, board has three ways they can proceed. They can deny an application, they can grant an application, or they can grant an application with conditions. If the applicant doesn't either doesn't like the denial, they have the right to appeal. If they are granted an approval with conditions and don't like the conditions, they have the right to appeal that also. So there's really three ways the board can go. In most situations, the applicants agree, you know, to the conditions from the board's professionals. You've made your position very clear. But I think there, you know, there's a good faith basis based on the township ordinance as to the half width, which we could make an accommodation for, and the sidewalks and the curbs. And, and I think anything beyond that, you and I would probably be true, you know, going over ground that we've, we've covered at not only this meeting, but the, the prior meetings.
Yeah, I have, I have that feeling, but I'm, I want to be sure that I understand what you're what you're indicating might be, you know, a, a, a possible resolution. Right now, Mr. Hinterstein's memo says an easement recorded with the deed providing a a half width of 55 feet. And right now, what exists is 33. So that's 22, that's 22 feet. That's worth $25,000 based on the township's assessment of Mr. Yates' property. And that's only if it, you know, the, you treat all square footage equally. So what, what exactly are you saying as far as the, the modification of the proposed easement?
I was suggesting a dedication to a 40-foot half width as opposed to a 55-half width, as long as there was a 10-foot temporary construction easement. Whenever, whenever that need arises, that the applicant would be willing to do that.
Wouldn't that be the, wouldn't that be the county performing that work? I'm, I'm not, I'm not clear on how how the township of Piscataway can authorize Mr. Yates to get a building permit to start constructing sidewalk on county property.
The property's in Piscataway, so he has to deal with Piscataway and the county.
Well, again, it's all...
Yeah, the applicant already has an approval from the county, so you're, you're saying, or I guess it's a, a legal, a legal contention, is that the, the township has some sort of jurisdiction over this property to require Mr. Yates to do a sidewalk and, and convey an easement if he wants to subdivide his, his, his property.
I'll answer that, but I thought I cut someone off.
Tom, it was, it was just Dawn Corcoran. I was just going to reiterate that we do have an ordinance in place, as you indicated, 2507, that requires a sidewalk. And that, that's all I was going to say, so. Not just the sidewalk, well, I mean, it requires the curb, the sidewalk, and the dedication, but...
Correct.
Well, I, I, I've read that. I haven't read it in the last month, but I believe that it's, it's it's a township ordinance and and, and it begs the question, does the township have the authority to enact an ordinance that affects, you know, county property? I mean, we have, we have we have a, an approval from the county to proceed. There, there is no mention of sidewalk, there's no mention of a dedication. They asked for the sketch plat to be revised to show the specifically asked to be revised to show the, the half width and the, and the width of River Road at that juncture. And then they issued their letter of December 8th. So I'm, you know, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to, I mean, I understand that there's a, there's a gray area here as to jurisdiction in your view.
Mr. Zulu, the only thing I would say is, in smack dab in the middle of that letter of December 8th, 2021, it says the above approval, meaning from the Middlesex County Planning Board, does not in any way relieve the applicant from constructing all improvements in accordance with all federal, state, and local government regulations and design specifications.
I see that.
And my position is, until a court tells me otherwise, that that means you need sidewalks, curbs, and a dedication. And I think the, the municipality as a, as a way of, of trying to work with the applicant could, could live with a 40-foot half width and a 10-foot temporary construction easement along with the, the items in terms of curbs and sidewalks that can be worked out, you know, at the appropriate time. But that's a legal position. And we both know, legal positions, you know, I've given the board my advice. You, you differ with that. That's fine, you know. I'll compliment us both. Great legal minds can disagree.
Well, let's, let's invest it from a practical point of view. Is there any?
Let me just finish, just finish.
Yeah.
If one of us wants to, we appeal it, we file an action prerogative writs, and Judge McCluskey or whoever's sitting at the time is going to tell us who was, who was the better legal mind and, and thought it out better. So you know, I think our positions are, are pretty clear. And practically speaking, you know, you know, the board, the board has three choices. Deny, approve, or approve with conditions. And I, I don't have a vote in that, and I don't have a say in it. So I'm just giving the board my two cents. You've made your two cents very clear. So whatever you want to say now, I, I had my...
Is there any specific plan that exists at this time to widen River Road in this area? I can't conceive that the county would have, would have issued this approval or contingent approval if they, if they intended to widen River Road to 120, 110 feet.
Madam Chair, if I may, this is Mayor Waller. Can, can we, somebody just call for a vote? I, I think both sides have proved their point. I think it's time for the board to vote.
Mrs. Zulu, that's a county. I'm not going to tell the county what they're thinking or the county planning board. I can only deal with the Piscataway Planning Board. So you don't have any further evidence or testimony you wish to present?
The only additional testimony would pertain to the applicant's willing to comply with the other provisions of the planner's letter of May 19th.
And I believe he had previously testified to that.
I think, I think he has.
Yes.
Okay, if there's no withdrawal of the application, then I guess the board would have, someone would have to make a motion as to whether to accept this this application or not.
Madam Chair, this is Dawn Corcoran. Based on the fact that there's a township ordinance in place, again, 2507, that requires sidewalks, curbing, and right-of-way dedication, in addition to the fact that the county also indicated in their December 8th, 2021 letter, as indicated by Mr. Barlow, that the applicant is not in any way relieved from constructing all improvements in accordance with federal, state, local government regs, et cetera. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application subject to the CME report and subject to the staff report with the revision that the dedication be made to create a 40-foot half width opposed to the 55-foot half width. In addition to the 10-foot temporary construction easement, the applicant would also be required to construct the sidewalk and the curbs.
At what point would the applicant be required to construct sidewalk and curb?
Well, Mr. Zulu, in order to perfect the subdivision, all of the conditions of the board approval would have to be met. However, your app, the applicant could post the bond for those improvements. And then the bond is in place, so obviously, Mr. Yates, the bond wouldn't be returned to Mr. Yates until those improvements were in place.
I'm just trying to understand the logic here. Let's assume that Mr. Yates were prepared to go ahead and install sidewalk. Then the county and the town decide that they're going to widen River Road, and you tear that out and install sidewalk and curb and gutter all over again.
But the town was, the town was willing to work with Mr. Yates to take that 40-foot half width, and then the 10-foot temporary construction easement. That being said, I don't foresee there being a need for any additional roadway dedication, once that, that has been made.
At, at this point, there's, there's a motion, if there's a second.
Do we have a second?
If I may, I have a practical question. This is Nathan Yates.
Point of origin, yes, Mr. Yates.
We have to, we have to get a second and either vote positively or negatively, and, and then we can clarify the questions since
Okay, we've got a motion. We have a second. Do we have a second?
Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, I'll second that motion pending that 40-foot width. And just as it was so stated, the motion.
Mr. Kenny has seconded the motion as it was stated by Ms. Corcoran. Ms. Buckley, do you have a roll call, please?
Mayor Waller? I heard him, he was muted. Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Espinoza?
Yes.
Mr. Foster? I'm mute, Mr. Foster.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Yes.
What was Mayor Waller's vote, Ms. Buckley? I didn't get it.
It was affirmative.
It was yes, counselor.
Thank you, sir. So, what was your question, Mr. Yates?
Mr. Yates?
Yeah, hi, I was trying to get an explanation for what the construction 10-foot easement is. I don't know what that terminology refers to.
It refers to during, if there is construction, during construction, they have the right to use an additional 10-foot of width to do work, use vehicles, store machine, machines and, and materials and things like that until the roadwork is done.
And then restore it back to you.
And since there's hemlock trees running the entire distance, probably 50 of them that are 30, 40 feet tall, how would that be impacted?
There's an obligation to restore theoretically what existed before.
Okay, I, I guess by theoretically, I don't see them installing 30, 40-foot trees that would live, but okay. Doesn't sound very practical.
Well, just to clarify a, a point of law, Mr. Barlow, you, you indicated that that the courts are open to modify an application that's conditionally approved.
No, it's the right, it's not conditionally approved.
It's not conditional.
It's been approved with conditions.
That's what I mean. That's what I mean.
As with any other land use matter, an action in lieu of prerogative writs could be filed and follow the normal course as with any land use application. You have to get the transcript, file your, file your complaint, ask for your relief, and the matter will proceed accordingly.
I've only done it once, it was many years ago, but I, I, I know about the prerogative root.
Yeah.
Have you, I'll, I'll talk, we'll talk about it later.
You know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barlow and members of the board.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Good night.
You too.
I believe this completes our agenda for tonight. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
The move, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The move.
Everyone have a good evening.
Good night.
Good evening, folks.
Good night.